One minute, Angie? That's satisfactory with you.
I love it when people are here. You know, it's so nice, right?
Good, Matt's here.
Make sure to speak into the mic, Tom.
That's a good reminder.
See after your devices, if one was needed.
No one wants to hear us talk. (laughing).
Okay. In that case, I will call the meeting to order at seven o'clock sharp. We have some consent agenda items as, as a, just a mechanical question. Do any board members have any specific consent agenda items they would like to pull out? Or can we approve them as presented? If so, I would look for a motion.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
You'll second.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Ah, let's see. We also have some professional staffing recommendations that do not require a vote, so we will move to public comments. Angie, do we have any public comments?
I would not have anyone register public comments for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving along. That brings us to the high school student report.
Hello.
Ooh, boy. Hi there.
Hi, sorry.
We've got Hade in the house.
It's okay.
All right, I here share the student report. My screen. All right. All right, so the McFarland High School student report for April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Some of our highlights, so what's going on at MHS right now? We are actually celebrating Med Club's achievement with raising over twenty-nine thousand dollars to support leukemia and lymphoma, lymphoma society. Their success was celebrated at Menona Terrace along with other visionaries in the greater Madison area. That evening, a total of almost six hundred twenty thousand ones unveiled as dollars raised for the money that has been raised since that evening. And here's some of our, some of our key people for that. We also ha, are celebrating our Mad Mun. Seven MHS Law U N students headed to Wisconsin High School Law U N conferences hosted at UW Madison. Um, they went to spend two days building alliances, delivering speeches, and responding to crises as they acted in a decision-making role play. Um, several MHS members had incredible engagement, specifically Mary Desiree, who won an award as the, as the role of Thomas Jefferson in the Historic Crisis Committee about the first American cabinet. Uh, and then we harbor VAC competition. Congrats to Tatum Kurtz, Aspen Tierney, Oscar Los, Lydia Foster, and Gwen Detmers for getting gold medals in individual arts competition at Edgewood College. What we have coming up. The week of April twenty-one, twenty-first to twenty-fifth, Student Council will raise Cancer Awareness Week. They will be sponsoring cancer awareness to raise, um, awareness about different types of cancer and raise money to donate to the American Family Children's Hospital. On April sixteenth, pre-ACTs will be secure, only freshmen and sophomores will attend school, meaning I will be in bed. From April twenty-fifth to twenty-seventh, Lightning Thief, the musical, will be performed in McFarland High School Performing Arts Center. On the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, it will be hosted at seven P M., and on the twenty-seventh, it will be hosted at two P M. And hosted by yours truly, on April twenty-fourth, Connect Club will be hosting the Second Annual Equity Picnic. Equity clubs from both McFarland High School and middle school will be joining together, discuss and participate in activities on how to make our school better and more acceptable place. Our athletic updates for sports, track and field has been a busy week. They managed to go to a conference meet at Mount Hora and invitationals at Watertown, UW Whitewater. For softball, we just started off that season with two well-played games. For girls across, we had the week off and a competition and held practices, but there, but we're getting ready for our game tomorrow at Edge. The boys across, they had their first game against Salt Prairie and competed very well. Baseball had two games. Girls soccer had a busy week with also two games. Boys golf had a good first week, and they will start their competition this week. Boys tennis had a good first week as well, and they will start their competitions also this week. And Ultimate Frisbee has started their, their practices and are also getting ready for the week. And that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
We appreciate it too. Thank you so much.
I have one.
Any comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one question. The, um, Med Club is not one that I've heard of before. How long has that been around, you know?
I think it's been around, I think they opened it last year. Yeah, they're doing really well, though. I've, I've seen them constantly having these kinds of fundraisers for cancer and for a lot of other, uh, different events. Yeah, they're, they're very, um, they're very good at what they do.
Yeah. Jade, I have a couple of things. How did Med Club raise twenty-nine thousand dollars?
I personally don't know all about it, but I do know that one of the members, who is a friend of my sister's, ended up sending out ma, uh, mail to people who are interested, trying to raise awareness, sending out a essay or some kind of, uh, paragraph that just explained what they were doing and also trying to just bring awareness to the situation while, you know, trying to get out to people they know.
And you talk about the equity picnic that's coming up for middle school and high school. Um, and I know you do things with other school districts. Do other districts have equity picnics with like the middle school, high school students?
I'm actually not sure. I know that our, uh, it was our principal, our, our president of Connect Club who started actually last year. So we're, we're really not sure about other districts. But yeah, this is our second time actually ever doing it, so we're just hoping it goes well.
Well, kudos to you to, uh, bring the middle school and high school youth together for that. And the one other, i- it's more of a question. The Hope Squad. We used to he, hear quite a bit about the Hope Squad, uh, their activities, mission. Could you provide us sometime in the future, sort of an update or a status quo report on the Hope Squad here at the high school?
I would really like to. I just don't, in our club right now, don't have anyone who's participating in Hope Squad. I know last year, when it first started, one of the key exec board members was part of Hope Squad. He was like, uh, actually a part of the executive team on Hope Squad, so that's why they had so much information about it then. But now we don't have any members who are part of it, and we're trying to reach out, but it's just that our meetings aren't accumulating in a good place for everyone.
It is, yes.
Who's your advisor?
Uh, Ms. MacLeir.
That might be something we could chat with her about to see if we could get some info.
Yeah, that's very important.
Yeah, they're still very active. They just had Hope Week last week.
Yeah, last week or the week before.
So it's just a matter of getting it, you know, to connect, to get to you.
Yes.
So that's, so that's another interesting, um, question then. How many, like, what percentage of clubs are represented in Connect Club, do you think?
Honestly, it's, it's not that very many. I know we have a couple, we have a few members. It's very unfortunate. We had a couple of members sign up and then just no one goes to the meetings. I think it's just since we host them so early in the morning. It's just a matter of time and I guess participation. But yeah, it's, it's really sad. We did want to have, that's the whole reason we have Connect to bring together more clubs. We have been noticing more freshmen, but I think it is definitely something we have to think about time management-wise to get more connection.
It could be even something as simple as one of the, um, executive leaders for each club just sends a quick update to you, so that way it could be included in the high school report.
Yeah, that's actually very, yeah, I haven't thought about that. Yeah, I, I should definitely talk to, about that with my, with my fellow members.
Yeah, because we love hearing all the stuff, so.
So it would be, the mob, the idea of having a rep on Connect wouldn't.
Wouldn't make sense, no.
Logical, so I think what you're saying is, makes a lot of sense.
Anybody? Anything else? If not, thank you very much.
Thanks, Hade. Thanks, Hade.
Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
You too. We'll see you next time. All right, that brings us to our informational items. And first on the agenda is the Joint Village Board School Board Meeting, held March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Tarnison.
Well, I, I was there, but I, you know, I can defer to our board members who are also there to share a little bit of their synopsis.
There we go.
Or do you want me to?
Go ahead.
I would prefer you did. But I will chip, I will chirp up.
Yes, so the, they're, uh, the main, um, guest speakers or guest topic, featured topic, I think would be a good way, was provided an update on the diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts of both the village and the school board. Uh, and so it began with our coordinator, Brittany Brazel, who shared a great update, uh, one that you have seen, just summarizing the things that, that we have done here through her leadership. The equity-specific clubs, talking about speak up, speak out, and, and addressing harmful language, uh, ensuring there's equitable outcomes across students, the mentoring circles that she leads, um, the staff professional development that she's been a part of and that we're leading with an equity lens. Uh, the, the McFarland Schools Equity Collective, and talking about collaboration with the village. Crystal Johnson, who is the, the, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Strategist for the village, joined a little bit later. She was having some travel, travel issues. Um, but Matt Schenke, the village administrator, provided an update on some of her work uh, leading their, um, Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. They've been working on a flag policy. Um, she's been very engaged in their mission, vision work, in establishing their, updating their mission and vision. The recruitment for the police chief is something she was heavily involved in, talking about gender-neutral restrooms in area facilities, uh, village facilities, really focusing on the integration of the departments and then some, some, some grant work as well. So I thought that was a, a, kind of a, a nice way to show, um, some of the different things that are happening. And the bigger updates for the village are that they continue to, to update that mission, vision, and values. That's been a big project. We talked a little bit about the, the solar farm, um, and that, that work continues on that collaborative po, project with the village, uh, on Sigalco.
Is that broken ground yet?
It, it, it will this spring. It has not yet, but, um, we'll be breaking ground. Um, you know, it's going through the planning commission. By now, it's gone through the planning commission. And, you know, this is a project that is two years in the making, so.
Right.
It take a lot of persistence and tenacity from a lot of people, including, uh, from the school and, uh, Director of Business, Jeff Mahoney, and then several people on the village end as well, working with WPL. So, very exciting. I think it is their first joint project with a village and a, in a school district that they've worked with. We talked a little bit about Highway fifty-one construction, and, uh, that was, that was pretty much it. Our next meeting is May thirteenth. Anything you would like to add? Board members.
I don't think so. My, I, part of why I wanted you to talk was because I accidentally left my notes at home, but it's always a good, it's just always a good collaboration and update. And, um, I think, did we also decide this meeting or was that last meeting that we were gonna stick with quarterly? That was the last meeting.
Yeah, I think it was. That is, that is what it was. It was a quarterly.
Yeah, okay. So.
It's, it sounds like, uh, once that solar farm is up and running, that might be another field trip destination.
Oh, for sure.
For a particular grade level. Or levels, because I think, kind of, I'm not condescending, but obese students, even high school students.
Why not?
Yeah. Yep.
Anything else? If not, we will move along to unusually hazardous transportation plan. Mr. Mahoney, thank you.
Um, yeah, unusually hazardous transportation zones. I mean, it's pretty exciting stuff. So another way to talk about it is what are really acceptable walk zones? Is kind of how we've always featured it on our website for our families and promoted it to our families. But I first just wanted to, uh, talk about, so state law requires that minimally, school districts must provide transportation for those students that live two miles or further away from their school. And, uh, the McFarland School District, actually, up until twenty seventeen, other than our four K program, had that in place for all levels. We required families to either walk or drive, um, up to two miles unless they lived in an unusual hazardous transportation area. In twenty seventeen, we did change a few things. We went to that we would transport all, continue to transport all four K students, which I think is pretty darn good.
Yeah.
And we also included K through two as part of that. At the same time, we lowered from two miles down to one mile, three through five. We left in place up to two miles unless the student lives in an unusual hazardous tran, transportation zone, six through twelve. Um, I bring that up because we have had a lot of changes to our, um, transportation of students that have been very positive and good. We transport nearly twelve hundred students every day, and that is a wonderful thing. Additionally, um, before I kind of dive into this, we've, you know, you talk about this collaborative projects. We've worked with the village on numerous projects to make sure that we're helping finding, you know, better crosswalks. We continue with our crossing guards. Um, so there's a lot of things that we continue to do. State law requires the school district to have on file with DPI a unusual hazardous transportation plan. When I arrived, there was one that was put in place in two thousand and one, and we reviewed it again in two thousand and seven, and there necessarily was not any changes that were necessary. In the fall of twenty twenty-four, we had a group of parents that were a little concerned about, uh, some walk zones, um, for our three, five grade levels. This was a project that was kind of on our plans and our radar that we have to move forward with. Um, and we've been kind of holding it off because it's quite an expense. This review is nearly twenty thousand dollars to have done. So we, for the first time, had to move forward with it because we actually had families that had challenged it, and so we moved forward with it this year. And that's a, when you think about it, we haven't had to have a formal study since two thousand and one. So I think it was, well, money well spent for the school district to have it professionally managed, reviewed. It used to be that the county would do it for free. Now the re, county requires the school district to contract before they review with someone. So all of that has occurred. How did we land on Taddy? They had done studies for Sun Curry, Wanakee, and DeForest most recently in our county. So they were kind of a natural. We've done some work with them a long time ago. So they are a very well-recognized organization, of which I think you saw the thirty-page document that exists there. I don't know all of their formulas. Some of them are a little unique. But what I wanted to focus on tonight is, first, we're just go to our website. Angie's gonna drive a little bit for us, not the school bus, just the website. That's right. If you were licensed to drive a bus, you'd never be able to get to do your day job. So scroll down to our, um, keep going. Go down to the walk zones. Keep going.
Oh, walk.
Yeah, it's probably.
So let's just, or go to the hazardous zone maps. Oops, you're right there. Yep, it's right below the walk zone, so.
It's just not wanting to.
It's not wanting to function. Well, I can describe it for you. Our hazardous walk zones include the area pretty much to the west of fifty-one and the north of Sigalco in our residential areas that are part of our village. Those have been in place well prior to Sigalco being developed into being a four-lane, uh, road. And more in particular, and something we'll talk about a little bit further, Highway fifty-one in two thousand and one did not include Larson Beach Road. Uh, please note that I did find the error in the report that has a little caveat. It's called Laguna Beach Road, which that'd be cool if you had Laguna.
That'd be awesome.
Weathered, but we don't. And Bruma Road is Bruma Road, so if you come across a couple typos.
Okay.
Uh, those are being fixed. So those are hazardous areas that would be within two miles of most schools where kids could walk. But you as a school board, your predecessors in two thousand and one determined those would not be walk zones. Partly because there were not safe areas. The underpass at Taylor Road did not exist. Larson Beach Road lights did not exist. Uh, there were not sidewalks that went down Farwell Street and crossed over at Farwell and fifty-one. So i- in a sense, this has been a good time for us to have this review so that we could determine if these areas still would remain as hazardous areas for, um, our schools. When we, and we can just kind of leave this up, when we go to the study, before we go to that, we've determined with this company that while the area in the north of Sigalco could have been potentially a walk area for six, twelve, the caveat that is holding that back is the fact that there's two municipal jurisdictions and the future development of what's happening on Sigalco Road. So that has been, continued to be determined that that is still gonna be an unusual hazardous transportation area, and we are still gonna have buses that will go to that area, no matter what. The area west of fifty-one will continue to be an area where, first of all, we transport all four K through two, so we don't even really have to get into that. All of three, five, within a mile, is prior to fifty-one. So there's no conversation about fifty-one and our third through fifth graders. When the, uh, Taddy scored out the walk zone safety area of the areas west of fifty-one, six through twelve scored within a reasonable level of being able to walk to school.
Yeah.
And it's within two miles. Um, it's, in some areas, it's very close.
Yeah.
So, um, to summarize and to not go through a lot of detail, I just wanted to kind of cut to the chase that our big change not be a huge change because there's been a lot of modifications to Highway fifty-one, including two controlled intersections and underpass. And we're working with, um, one of the things that I asked for them to do, which they did, which is call out some recommendations for the state to consider on Highway fifty-one with signage and stuff like that. So when the state starts phase six, they're in phase seven right now, but they're gonna go to back to phase six, which is what comes through the village. We will be providing them information from the study of things that would enhance those area, those crossing areas even better for not only just students, but families and our elderly.
Yes.
So, um, a lot of good things, uh, from the study. I don't want to complain about the cost, even though it came out of my budget. It, it was the right time. The Taddy's review was then forwarded on to the county, which the county then reviewed it and met with local law enforcement. I wasn't involved in those conversations, and a couple weeks ago, they approved, uh, the Taddy recommendations and plan moving forward. The board doesn't have any action on this, this evening. This is informational, so that the next time the board meets on the twenty-first, we have to have an approved plan on file by the board so that we can send it to DPI. Um, I think if we want to the, I can stop, or I can go to the exhibits of, I think pictures are better than the words in this case. We could go to the, uh, exhibits that are in the report that just show it again, map-wise, where things will be at. I'll also note, while Angie's pulling that up, in addition to having these hazardous areas and areas that are within one mile or two miles of school, particularly six through twelve, parents had, have had an option to pay to have their students transported if we have routes that are going past a logical spot and we have room. That is getting to be a little bit more difficult because more of our families live further out. So it's, um, and, and our families pay, uh, this year about two hundred dollars per student. And some would say, well, boy, that's a lot. Well, the cost to transport a student in our district is nearing seven hundred dollars. So the district is still subsidizing.
Wow.
If they have space, and if it's on a road, about five hundred dollars. So it's.
Per student?
Per student.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So which page are you going to go to?
Yeah, almost to the last five pages.
It's page twenty.
Yeah, it starts at twenty.
I'm sorry, page, it starts at page eighteen.
Yes, it's this one right here.
So I'm not trying to go away from looking at the, so that's our unusual hazardous transportation zone for everybody, K twelve.
And is.
That's north of Sigalco. Those are the two areas that are in our village and in our school district.
So are they considered to be unusually hazardous, um, just due to the traffic? Or having to cross Sigalco? Or all?
Yes.
Okay. I've familiar with that neighborhood, and it's.
In other words, playing Glee and Frog.
Yeah, right.
So, and we had reached out to the city of Madison to see if we could get some sort of joint agreement about five, six year, you know, it was pre-COVID, so seven years ago. Uh, could we get crossing guards over there? And they didn't feel the city of Madison was not gonna do a crossing guard for half of the road. And we couldn't get a, so we couldn't work out an agreement of half the road and half the road between the village and the city because it's divided between the two municipalities.
Gotcha.
So.
Well, I will say there are some lovely new flashing lights at.
Valley Drive.
Yeah.
It's Valley Drive.
But then there's one even further.
And there's one at Marsh.
Yeah, which is, popped up about an hour. Yeah, which is popped up about an hour.
I think they moved one from the public safety intersection there to another spot. They felt it was more suited.
So, that is actually likely to, there's, I'll speak to that, Craig. There are two updates. The village is gonna do something here at Burma and a ninety-degree turn because a few years ago they put a sidewalk in there. So there's gonna be some flashing something coming there this summer. And then the equipment that was near the safety facility is gonna be out on Holsher and likely Red Oak so that there's additional safety at an area that's, it's not a controlled intersection, that's one block further down. But that is a kind of a blind.
Little bit.
The the speed data that we got on there was actually pretty good compared to some of the other locations.
I live right over there and speeding isn't the issue, it's just like the traffic and, I mean, it can get to be a little bit much.
So this first slide is again just the, for everybody in our district, that would be four K through twelve, even if we didn't offer transportation to all four K through second. That would be considered unusual hazardous transportation. And that's why we have nearly six hundred students that are on buses from those two areas.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Every day.
Wow.
Yes.
Wow.
A lot of buses go through secret places. You just went, no, it's a secret.
What place?
I'm a little.
Such a bad joke.
I know, I'd be accused of that. Next slide, please. That would be the Wabesa area. And as you can see, it's all really contained within, I gotta jump onto twenty-seven. We kind of went with an area that would be about just a mile because it was within the railroad tracks. It was south of Sigal Cow and it was east, just east of fifty-one. And it also compared relatively similar to our other neighbors, K fives, Oregon, Minona, DeForest, some of those as well, when we made that change back in twenty seventeen. So we're within, and it scored well with Taddy. If you see the slash hatch area on the east side, that's where the next east side development area could be and that would be considered part of, so we don't have to go back and do this study. If they continue to do residential, that area would be part of the one-mile zone for Wabesa.
Is that, does that include the eight acres for the solar farm in there?
Well, that actually probably just gets the outskirts.
Yeah.
That's actually gonna be commercial.
Okay.
So that acreage to the west of, to the east of our solar farm is gonna be commercial.
Okay.
So there wouldn't be.
Yeah.
It's just another chunk of land that could be developed for residential and that would be within, a portion that would be within a mile to Wabesa.
So just so I'm understanding this correctly, everything in blue is technically in a walk zone?
Yes.
So every student, their parents would pay two hundred dollars for the bus?
It, yeah, is, we had space and if we had spots for people to go.
Okay.
Is there a family, family plan? Do you have more than one student from the same family? Is there a price cut at all?
No.
I mean, it sounds like there's a.
Getting a price cut. Five hundred dollars.
Per child, you know, that's.
But we used to have a family.
But the first child also used to be three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
That's true.
Then the second child had a price reduction.
Five hundred, get one fifty percent off.
Then we went back down to a hundred.
That was with dollars back then. Now that's probably a six thousand dollar value. I don't know, I'm not good with inflation.
We are fortunate that we're able to do what we can because we're a really small land area school district.
That's great.
The next slide is the middle school, but it also represents the high school. This is the two-mile zone of which you'll see covers pretty much the entire village in full.
How did they measure it? Is that as a crow flies kind of distance or?
It's distance actually from a person's residence. So they map that to the starting point or the drop point of each of our buildings, which actually is on our board policy. And it's not as a crow flies.
No, could that be a circle?
Yep. So when we would have people, which we do every year, ask us to review, we drive from the point that's on our board policy to their location using the shortest distance road.
Okay.
Obviously, you got a couple weeks to send me questions, concerns, thoughts. And like I said, I'm taking care of the couple typos that I didn't come across until a couple days ago.
And financially, it's just the, what was it, twenty thousand?
It was just south of twenty thousand.
So Jeff, I have a question. If they were to do a little repair job on the sidewalk on Creamy Road between Country Wood and Milwaukee Street, so they couldn't, so students couldn't use the sidewalk, would that automatically become a hazardous zone? Would those kids be bused during that construction period or not?
Not necessarily.
Because there's a lot of leeway to walk between, you know, on either side of the sidewalk. There's the marsh on one side, the road right being there, so I was just curious about that. What about the reconstruction of fifty-one, that phase six that you were talking about? Are they sorry about reconstructing the intersection of Farwell and fifty-one?
No, I don't think that. There'll be different lighting and, you know, some of the recommendations that Taddy had was to have just better signage and also have, if some have ever experienced to go, in Madison, there's that where you push the button to walk and before traffic even gets a shot to move, it's just the only people, the only thing that's working is people are walking. You can't, there's still red lights, so it's called a delay. So those were the items that will pass along to the state, which, they'll be April twenty-fourth, which is also the NFL draft in Green Bay.
And my sister's birthday.
If anybody wants to come to Badger State Brewing, I will be there with my job, giving out free booze. Just throwing that up.
All right.
Have on my own professional bag.
There you go. The DOT will be at Wabesa Intermediate School and then presenting to the community and area businesses that evening on phase six.
And the last thing I comment is, this study has been very well done. And it's in-depth, comprehensive, so thanks for sharing that with us. So concerned about Sigal Cow and no crossing guards out there, but I understand, but you can limit this.
And that's why we're busing from there. It was a situation where we could have said, how about we really look at this? Or at this point, until some reconstruction ever happens there, we'll continue to have that as an unusual hazardous transportation area.
Yes, a walking bridge. Have the walk zones that are on here, how much do they differ from the current walk zones? Are they pretty?
They're pretty much identical.
Okay.
The nice thing is they have better boundary areas so that we can deal with and not have to drive to as many locations as much. The only real change is grade six through twelve, highway, west of Highway fifty-one is part of the walk zone.
Okay, cool.
I never knew what went into all this. You know, they talked about rush hour, yeah, student parking, parent parking, the crosswalks themselves, the distance between the sidewalk and the street, whatever. So it's very, I learned a lot with that.
I mean, there's practically algebra on here.
There is, yep.
Practically.
I mean, it is.
The other thing, Tom and for the rest of the board members, I mean, I actually, we're picking, we picked their brain because they were doing the study on how we could maybe improve our parking lot that needs to be redone asphalt-wise in a couple years. The west end of the high school, that's the last parking lot that hasn't been done since the referendum did it back in ninety-nine. So it's starting to sink a little bit. So, the village and Allegiant and myself have met, started talking about that area and Taddy gave us some ideas.
Great.
Thanks, Daddy.
Oh, that is good.
I like their name.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
That's really educational because people, they really begin to understand the logistics of what are seemingly simple things. And the work that goes on behind that makes it look simpler. Thank you.
And once again, I compliment the district for having the safety of students in mind when they're talking about all these decisions. And I think the idea of passing all four K through second grade has been a great improvement for the district.
And Tom couldn't walk them to school anymore.
But they can still, it's the best way to walk them home.
Anything else? Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have the district administrator's report. Mr. Turnitzer, the floor is yours.
Few things, a little bit of an update. So, April first was a couple things. One, we had an election for school boards, so congratulations to Megan Fester will be returning. And Meredith Huey will be joining us and she'll take the oath, they'll both take the oath of office at our next meeting, which will also be Mr. Mooney's last meeting for now.
Sad, for now.
And, but there were other referendums around because that's what schools need to do in order to maintain their funding. So, fifty-six percent of the referendums passed and that was eighty-nine questions in eighty-one districts. And the passage rates were fifty-seven percent for non-recurring operational and twenty percent for recurring operational and sixty-one percent for debt or capital projects. So, it was a little bit lower than what we saw in in November.
I thought the, I thought the recurring passage rate was really interesting. Like it made us, made me feel extra good about our, about our, passing ours.
And several non-recurring didn't.
Yeah.
Right.
Didn't pass to some even just two years.
Yep.
I really wish there was a way we could like simplify the conversation for people about referendums and public education financing. I was in my job job talking to some people in the Milwaukee area and we were talking about public education funding and, you know, it was a lot of, oh, the schools need to be doing more and it's a school's fault. And I was like, let me give you a little Funding One-O-One overview. And so when you break it down Barney-style, they're like, that's what's going on? I'm like, yes, that's what's going on, you know? And I don't know how we break it down easier because it is very, very confusing from, you know, the legal perspective, but.
Getting better.
We're getting better. It's true.
Unfortunately, we've had opportunities to practice. Some recognitions. One of the things that happens on a quarterly basis is our, our security of our, our network is evaluated by, by a cyber insurance company. And I want to just recognize Aaron Folsick and, and the crew, that team that keeps our network safe. Our last rating was a ninety-nine, which I think is like the best you can really, like, can you get a hundred? I don't think so. So, that just means we have a significantly reduced risk of a cyber incident. So that's great news. Shout out to Jeff Mahoney and, and village administrator Matt Schenke and Blake Deason from Park Architecture. They're gonna be presenting up at a conference coming up. The Wisconsin Association of Business Officers has a conference coming up and they're gonna talk about a village and school district collaboration. This is gonna focus on the inclusive park.
Oh, cool.
And their work and, and how that was better for everybody. And so that will be nice. Recognizing our very own high school teacher, Brian Ward, and the members of the Indigenous Solidarity Collective of McFarland. So they're organizing a fundraiser so that we can add a plaque to each of our buildings with the land acknowledgement. We do not have district funds available for these seven thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars it would cost to add for quality and durable signs to, one to each of our buildings. So, there's a fundraiser, if anybody wants to donate, it's on our website.
So these plaques that will go inside the buildings or outside? Okay.
Inside, similar to what you see, you know, like when you see the dedication.
Yes.
You know, it'll be very similar to that. And the village is also adding similar plaques to their facilities. So, thank you to Melissa Foale for her organization and the curriculum council leaders. Reminder, we brought, in my, in my time, brought back curriculum councils and that is a K twelve collaboration around content areas. So, looking for that scope and sequence across the grade levels and we are once again gonna have them. Again, people found it was valuable. We're gonna have four meetings next year, August, October, February, and May. They're gonna occur right before lunch on those professional development days. So that's exciting and I appreciate her leadership. Shout out to Fred Bartman. He's organizing a, a teacher study group, but it also involves parents. So, and you are welcome to join too. It's called Thrivers, The Surprising Reason Why Some Kids Struggle and Others Shine. So it's a book. We'll be reading each meeting, we'll read it, reflect on a chapter from the book and it's starting up April fifteenth. So, that's exciting, you know, just to learn about what, what helps kids persevere and, and the characteristics. We had the second year stay interviews have been concluded. So reminder, that's a practice that we started last year where Melissa Foale and I divide up and talk to people that have been here two years and talk to them about what's working, how could we improve, how can we keep you forever? And the feedback was really, really positive. They talked about what a strong, positive culture we have. They talked about high levels of job satisfaction, strong administrative report and, and a commitment to staying. And that was done through artificial intelligence, it's not just our bias. So that's what their feedback shared. Employees reported feeling very valued, supported, and heard. Areas of growth include professional development, just people want more opportunities that they can get, continued increasing communication with staff, compensation obviously was a concern that they mentioned and just more student support structures related to behavior and mental health. They all said, a hundred percent said they would recommend the district to a friend or a colleague. So, I thought that was, that was exciting. I think it is reflective of the value that our new teachers are seeing and also it reinforces the areas that we had already identified as, as growth areas. So, feels like we're on the right track, but we have work to do. It's just the right work.
That's wonderful, though.
Yeah, it's a, it's valuable. It's much better than just doing exit interviews. Because those tell you a story after the fact, still valuable. A few pictures from around the district to share with you. Here you have, you remember last time, I think I mentioned this kindness retreat? And then high schoolers come over and work with the fifth graders and they talk about showing acts of kindness and what that looks like and building empathy. So, a great event and really exciting and, you know, kids get to interact with the high schoolers who are really kind of their idols. We bring in a group, an outside group to facilitate that's just so, their expertise is very impressive, youth frontiers. Been doing that for several years, so thanks to those that organized that too, especially the fifth grade team. Robotics got a trophy here, the middle school robotics. And again, if you ever have a chance to check it out, please do. The high school robotics practice is in that room just behind if you ever wanna take a peek in that after a board meeting. The Blue Notes and the middle school singers did a, a tour just before break. So, went really well, very exciting. I think that is at, is that Wabesa, I think? So just a really, a great event. I was able to attend one of them and, phew, there's a lot of talent there. And they really had fun and the students were really engaged, great audiences. That was fun. Here you can see at, on that same day in the afternoon, the middle school has a tradition before breaks of having a drop everything and read for staff and students alike. So that time right before spring break. It shows our commitment to literacy and our recognition that kids get a little hyped up before break And so, we provide a very calm activity to transition into.
And Aaron, what's the significance of the share sign there?
So, in the, that's in the library at the middle school and they have signs, oh, gosh, I can't remember what they all say. One of them says share. So, it's just about, it's sort of like things to do in the library. So, that's one of the things that you do in the library. I can't remember. I should know. We've talked about this, you know, I think I, I mentioned this at our, our last time. So, now you just see some pictures of this resident whose, whose father was a, in Poland and, you know, fought. So, I think it was a really impactful story. You can see a student there asking follow-up questions afterwards. It's always a good sign when students voluntarily come up afterwards to spend time with another adult. So, curiosity was piqued. Another activity, this is also, again, I think both of these were organized by Angie Bazan, so thank you to Angie. And this is speaking to his grandson's US history class, which gotta love that, right?
Yeah.
And talking about his experience in the Air Force, in the Cold War and Vietnam Wars.
Yeah, Vietnam.
So, good experiences. You heard about this a little bit, twenty-nine thousand dollars. And I will say, as, as someone that received a personal card encouraging donation and then did, that's persuasive. That the personal touch and the extra time that was put in really led to that. So, wonderful fundraiser. Model UN, you heard a little bit about that. See them down on campus there. Very happy, very proud.
I like the post-it note on there.
Well, that's...
Yes.
You don't lose your notes.
It sends a message.
It does. It really stands out, literally and figured.
Yeah. Since we had our last board meeting, it was National Parent Professionals Day and we just have such a great team. It's one of the things that our second year stay people would often reference is the quality of, and the talent that our support staff, our parent professionals have. They really make a difference. Definitely, you can't value them enough, you know? We need to keep reminding them how valuable they are. It was also National School Librarian Day last week. So, here's our four outstanding library media specialists that do way more than you can ever imagine. And as was mentioned prior to the board meeting, starting, it is the Associate Principals Week. So, we recognize them today and all week and they have a challenging job. Having done that job, I certainly understand and that was in a different time. So, great admiration for PJ Dana, Brooke and Brett.
How long has Brad been the assistant principal?
It's been at least fifteen years.
I was going to say, probably fifteen.
Yeah, yeah. So, he has been in that role since I started as principal. Well, he kind of a year before, he did half time. So, that's ten, thirteen, yeah, about fourteen.
The thing that I'm most impressed, this is one of those things that really helps staff tremendously, is, is these, these individuals. And their ability to work with their principal. And it's just, it's a coordinating thing that, and they do it seamlessly.
Yep.
And it's wonderful.
Yeah, and their expertise in collaborating with families is just really admirable.
And it's exciting that we're going to be looking at hiring or you're about to start looking in a hiring process for what's in the new school.
Yes, there are interviews this week for a Wabisa associate principal.
That's wonderful.
Coming up, April is, well, we're in April. It's National Autism Acceptance Month, Hmong Heritage Month, Arab American Heritage Month, National School Library Month, National Bilingual Multilingual Learners Advocacy Month, and Occupational Therapy Month. Of course, we have the, the week this week for our social principals. The ninth is Prisoners of War Remembrance Day. The ninth is also our Mentor Men tee Dialogue Dinner with our new, new staff and their mentors. The eleventh is the Middle School Student of the Month Assembly, also the Day of Silence. The American Creed Day is the thirteenth. The fourteenth is the fourth grade music art show, art music show. And the sixteenth of April is Band Orama, which is always a fun event. Patriots Day is the nineteenth. We have Easter Sunday on the twentieth. And then, we're back here for a school board meeting on the twenty-first. And it's also kicks off third grade field trips to the Dane County landfill where they learn about the landfill. Yeah, so lots of good things. Any other recognitions from the board?
I mean, the music department, they're quite busy these last few days.
Yes, Los Angeles.
But we'll, we'll have a report on that next time when it's all finished, I'm sure.
Yeah, very exciting.
If nothing else, then, thank you very much, Mr. Tarnitzer.
My pleasure.
And we will move along to our action items. And the first is a discussion and potential action on renaming of Conrad Elvium Primary School. And there's a little something else here. In terms of making a motion on this, the suggestion is after discussion, a board member may make a motion to rename the school. However, it is not necessary for a board member to make a motion to keep the name, to keep the current name. If a board member wishes to make a motion, a possible motion might be, and then it's, it says. So, what I would like to do is start with Megan Chapman and go around the room in a clockwise motion to make any comments you have as little or as much and...
Are you sure you don't want Bruce to go first because he's got notes?
We potentially may vote on this tonight.
Okay.
Just, I think what I'm going to do, just, just for a second, is just to give you a little, in case if someone's just watching for the first time, just to give you just a quick overview, that this has been in the process for about two years. The, the concerns were brought forward by a student, Riley Brown, a couple of years ago. And a citizens, uh, uh, facilities naming committee was advisory, facilities naming committee was formed. They provided a recommendation at the last board meeting. So, if you're just tuning in for the first time, please go back and watch that report that's available there. At that time, they recommended that Conrad Elvium Primary School be renamed. And kind of the way that they, they phrased it here is that his name is connected to a documented event in nineteen thirty-one when he was one of one hundred and six people who signed a petition to change the neighborhood covenants in the Nakoma, in Nakoma to exclude people of color. Though historical context suggests this action may not have defined his full character, the name of the school should reflect our present day commitment to belonging and inclusivity for all students, families, and community members. I won't read all of it, but they had several other recommendations within that, including making, continuing to honor the wonderful things that he did. And recommended forming a separate committee to explore possible future names. Okay, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, first off, I want to tell the committee, you guys did an amazing job on educating all of us about Conrad Elvium. You know, I walked in the door and my family was like, how are you going to vote? How are you going to vote? And I was talking to them about everything we talked about. And then, even, you know, just in my travels and talking to friends and family about Conrad Elvium and everything. Because it's a really important conversation that we have. So, getting quick to the point, I am in support of renaming the school. You know, Conrad Elvium did a lot of great things. I am, I, I don't want to focus on the negative pieces that he might have done just due to the timing of him moving into the neighborhood. We talked about how he was only living in the neighborhood for about two months when he got asked to sign the document. And we don't know what his motivation is behind it. But in the same sense, I would never want any students, staff, parents to feel that they weren't welcome and accepted in a school due to the name of the school itself. Also, if we look at all the other schools in McFarland, this is the only school that is named after someone. That being said, I want to be very conscientious of the fact that we had a wonderful community support our district with the referendum. There is a significant cost associated with renaming the school. And we are in, you know, a financial time right now that has a fairly significant amount of uncertainty associated with it. And I just think we need to be very conscientious of our budget and how we are spending those dollars. So, from a timeline perspective, I do know this was a two-year process. And ultimately, I, I'm glad it took two years because it really got us to the place we are now. But I just want to make sure that as a board, as an administration, we just look at various funding avenues. We do have a lot of very generous people within McFarland. So, I don't know if there's any opportunity there. But like I said, I'm in complete support of renaming the school. I just want to be budget conscious.
Thank you. Bruce?
Okay, I'm going to confess that I, I wrote five pages here. So...
That's okay.
I was kind of anticipating there'd be more people here. So, with that in mind, I will probably try to peck through what I've written. But I think in the end, I'm probably a better thinker in some ways by having something on paper than just trying to ad lib. I know that inevitably, I would afterwards kind of kick myself for having left something out. So, please forgive me. Hopefully, Mr. Tarnitzer will not fall asleep as he warned me beforehand. And at the same time, can I just start with, again, thank you, all of you who were on that committee? Because I just, first of all, I guess more than anything, you confirm my belief that we are all in this together. I want to especially thank Riley just for bringing the question to us in the school board about two years ago. It's a very appropriate question to ask our community. Is it something that we should do? And I'm so proud that our students are thinking and questioning about what they're being taught. And at the same time, I'm so proud that our teachers encourage that. And I believe it was Angie Bazan, it was in her class where this happened. I just think it's one of the most important goals of an education, to get young people to think and question things. It's how we develop good citizens. I believe we live in dangerous times. We have become so divided and we somehow find ourselves believing that everything is a zero-sum game. I win, you lose. If you win, I lose. And unfortunately, we have political leaders who are pushing us to believe that. Zero-sum games may work in a game, but they can be incredibly divisive. And so, they don't work in democracies like our nation, our states, our local communities, or in our school district. And that's because we all are in this together. So, Riley, I'm thanking you. I spent a considerable amount of time thinking about the issue and it hasn't been easy. However, luckily for me, I really tend to enjoy the challenge. And I'm also lucky that I've always seen myself as more of a tortoise than a hare in my thinking process. Things just kind of stew around and I just need time to reflect and slowly digest everything. Again, perhaps most importantly, I see the whole experience, this educational experience and a chance to learn about ourselves, our community, our state, our nation. And I hate to see us waste that opportunity. Again, as a former teacher, I think that's so important. Don't waste these opportunities. I've gone back like everyone else, back and forth on it. I don't think there's an easy solution. And as a student and a teacher of history, life unfortunately is rarely simple. And the more I thought about it, the more I realized that the complexity I'm feeling is due to the fact that both sides are partly right, which also means both sides are partly wrong. And that is where I believe we will find the truth somewhere between them. I do believe that truth can set us free and as a result, it will make us stronger together. As a social studies teacher and coach, I love to teach about paradoxes. My students or athletes would rightly point out I just contradicted what I had said. And then, I would smile and say, yes, but they're both true, aren't they? And they were. I believe the question of whether or not to rename Conrad Elvium School is just that. As I lay out my reasoning, let us remember what Abraham Lincoln said so beautifully in his second inaugural address. And I probably didn't need to say this, but it's such a beautiful statement. "With malice towards none, with charity for all, with firmness in the right as God gives us to see the right, let us strive to finish the work we are in." As I said, I was very impressed with all the work the committee had gone through. In fact, as I read through the last page, that's page sixteen of the summary, this summary is, I'm sorry, it's just damn good. It's amazing. In fact, if you take a look at my notes, you just say excellent, excellent. I'm going through the whole thing.
Got a good grade.
Yeah, it was, it was. As I read through the page that you presented at our last board meeting, and it's where you make your recommendation, recommendation to the school board, I found myself agreeing with everything you said. His incredible accomplishments, the belonging and inclusivity of all students, families, and community members, upholding the district's mission, vision, commitments to belonging, continuous improvement, and compassion, not just words but in actions that shape the experiences of our students and our community. However, in the next paragraph, in fact, it's the very last paragraph, and it's the very last sentence of this report, something was written that just did not resonate with what I believe is the truth. It states, "Changing the name of the school sends a message to students that while you can and should embrace a growth mindset and learn from past mistakes, your decisions matter and have lasting impacts alongside your own noble endeavors." And so far, at that point, I agreed with all of this. However, the rest of the sentence says, "So, it's important that they," and here I presume they mean, or you mean, "your decisions and your actions." "So, it's important that they align with your values and the legacy you want to leave." And I read this and I said to myself, but that's not the way life works. It's not as if we always think about what our legacy is going to be. None of us know exactly where our life is taking us. None of us know the ending of our story and certainly not as a young person. All we can do, in fact, the best we can do as we muddle through our lives is try to do the best we can. I wish it was clearer than that, but it's not. It's like saying Conrad Elvium should have known that he was going to become president of the University of Wisconsin, that he discovered the B vitamin, niacin, and in doing so, cured polygrah that was responsible for the deaths of eighty-seven thousand poor Americans, the vast majority of them being black females, followed next by black males. That he was going to be nominated for eight Nobel prizes and he should have known that his hometown of McFarland, Wisconsin, was going to name a new elementary school after him in nineteen sixty-eight. He should have thought about this before he signed that racial covenant in nineteen thirty-one as a thirty-year-old, recently hired professor and new father. We have no idea why he signed that racial covenant. However, we do know that at the time, nearly half the homes in the United States owned by whites had racial covenants. And I cut out something about my own family and growing up and I brought my high school yearbook. If anyone wants to talk to me afterwards, you can, because that influenced me as well. Presentism is the term used for judging people in the past by our current present day values and beliefs. It is a very questionable practice. We need to jump back in a time machine. I always had a time machine in my classroom so that my students, when they came in, I said, we're going back to nineteen thirty-one or whatever it was. The Great Depression, which went from nineteen twenty-nine until nineteen forty-one was raging. In nineteen thirty-one, unemployment was rising. Home values were plunging. We were also in the middle of the Great Migration, which went from about nineteen fifteen, pretty much near the end of World War One, to about nineteen seventy or even nineteen eighty. Millions of poor blacks were leaving the Jim Crow South and hoping to find social, political, and economic opportunities in the North. Are people aware that there was a huge KKK rally held in Madison, Wisconsin in nineteen twenty-four? If you read this book, Settling, there's a picture of it. This is Madison. All of these events could have played a part in having that racial covenant. We do also know that there were people at the time who refused to sign a racial covenant. And there are fortunately always a few who were ahead of their time. But in the Great Bell Curve of humanity of America at this time, I think that Conrad Elvium probably was somewhere in the middle. I would say he probably reflected the values of most white Americans in his views on race, but we don't know for sure. However, what impresses me most about, or impresses me about Conrad Elvium was that in later years, we have statements, actions that showed a clear commitment to human rights and that he voiced sympathy for those whose rights were denied. He also came to the belief before the height of the civil rights movement, which was later in the sixties, and the ever-expanding widespread coverage of television. He must have been influenced by Brown versus Board of Education, Topeka, Kansas, nineteen fifty-four, the murder of Emmett Till, Rosa Parks and the Montgomery Bus Boycott, those were both in nineteen fifty-five, and the actions of President Eisenhower, which I think took tremendous courage, and the Little Rock Nine. As a former social studies teacher, I'm deeply concerned that we are increasingly trying to... trying to sanitize history. I have always hated political correctness. We should always strive to discover the truth and learn from it. At the same time, we need to realize that both liberals and conservatives are quite willing to leave out or erase inconvenient individuals and events that don't quite fit their agenda. It's one of the things that bothers so many people about attempts to rename things. And however, in a weird twist, the anti-woke movement of today is trying to do the same thing by trying to end diversity, equity, and inclusion and related programs censoring historical references like at the Smithsonian and other governmental agencies. Some conservatives are trying to do exactly that. In fact, there are Americans who would like to strip Martin Luther King Jr. of his significance and importance, even after all the incredible accomplishments and contributions that this man made to our country. They want to remove simply because he, like Conrad Elvium, wasn't perfect in his personal life. He had flaws. Perfection is a pretty high standard for most of us. If Conrad Elvium did change his views on race, then we need to applaud that, and it should be a reason for keeping his name on our primary school. Is that being woke? I prefer the biblical term epiphany, and that is what I think happened to him, and I hopefully will happen to others as our nation continues on its journey. Epiphany should be viewed as a strength, by the way, not a weakness. I would like to see our elementary school continue to be named after Conrad Elvium. He grew up in McFarland. He became a world-renowned scientist. He saved tens of thousands of lives. I had hoped that he would serve as an inspirational role model for our students, just as Martin Luther King Jr. has. I started to term the long blue line here in McFarland as a way to get our athletes to see that they're part of a great tradition in athletics that extends back to our founding as a school district. I hope that it might motivate some of our athletes to say, well, if they did it, so can I. We need our students to dream big. We need positive role models for our youth, and I think Conrad Elvium could provide that example. There will always be that controversy, but also mystery over the racial covenant. In fact, it will always be his cross to bear. However, it also becomes an incentive for people to read the display or exhibit about his accomplishments, while at the same time, it gives an incentive to also read the history and the impact that racial covenants have had on America. I feel that is imperative, that we must have both of them in that display, his accomplishments as well as the impact of the racial covenants that they have had on the lives of black Americans. Let me use the story of my parents to illuminate. Soon after World War Two, my dad, with money from the GI Bill and with an FHA loan, bought a house that I grew up in Riverside, Rhode Island. He bought it for around three thousand six hundred dollars. Both the GI Bill and the FHA loan program were not made available to black Americans, something I never learned in high school or in college. In fact, I only learned this when I began to prepare as a teacher in U.S. history. That is horrible. I often think how much wealth my sisters, my brother and I inherited as a result of this opportunity, and how much each of us in this room have inherited as a result of the programs like this, while so many black Americans have been denied that opportunity. And depressingly, in the book Poverty by America, and it's right here, it's written by the author who wrote the Pulitzer Prize-winning book, Evicted. The author, Matthew Desmond, points out there is still discrimination going on in our cities and suburbs by the use of zoning laws. So in other words, yes, we've ended the covenants, but there's other ways. The R1 and R2 districts are still being used as a way to segregate our neighborhoods. I believe it is getting better in our nation, but it's still painfully slow, and we have to keep fighting for justice. And perhaps, I apologize for going so long. I hope no one believes, this is my probably key statement, I hope that no one believes that by simply removing Conrad Elvium's name from the elementary school, by doing that, we are striking a blow against racism. That is pretending at best. My greatest fear is that in removing his name, it will rather quickly just disappear, as has happened in so many other renaming's. I cringe to hear a person ask in the future, wasn't this school named after some guy named Conrad Elvium? Who was he? And another person answers, he was some racist guy from McFarland. What a waste that is. And such a great learning opportunity lost. And without Conrad Elvium's name on the school, there is less incentive for students and families in McFarland to talk about the history of racism in our country. That is also a waste and a great learning opportunity lost. Like Conrad Elvium, I believe education is a great tool for social change. At times, it may be slow and cumbersome, but I believe it is still the best way to shape our future and help our nation form a more perfect union. As I mentioned in the beginning about paradoxes, what if both the liberals and the conservatives are partly wrong and both partly right on this issue? I think they are. Racism will always be our nation's cross to bear until we take the time to be open and honest about how pervasive and pernicious it has been throughout our history. If the truth will help set us free, then let McFarland be a way to show that truth. Lastly, one comment that I would like to finish with. There are those in this society who don't want us to teach the history and the real facts about racism in this country because it will make some children feel guilty. My response is that a good teacher, like a parent, can explain that we can't change the past, but we can and we must learn from it. My biggest fear is that if we are not honest, we could be on the verge of teaching our children to not even listen to their conscience or have empathy for their neighbor, and that is both scary and sad. We are all in this together. Sorry.
No apologies necessary.
No apologies.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. That was, your thoughtfulness is always an honor to serve with. Yes, there, many have said it already. The committee members said it when they presented last week. I think it's a both-and situation. There's both reasons to rename and both good things that Conrad Elvium did and things that he maybe wouldn't be proud of, or that we, using my new, the new word now, presentism, is that right? That we would deem as, you know, not a good choice. But it is, it's both and. He's human, we're human. And I think we really have to embrace that growth mindset without erasing people's, the good that they've done. And so I do, I'm also in support of renaming the school with the idea of having some fiscal responsibility, and that to me, it's two different decisions. First, deciding whether we rename it or not, and then second, how we fund that or how it gets funded. And I think it's, but I also think it's important to, a lot of, for the reasons that you said, Bruce, and that the committee brought up, is that it's important to recognize, you know, that recognition of him and that the fact that the school is named, you know, Conrad Elvium Primary School for so long, that that is recognized somehow in the school after it's renamed. Tom?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I got a message this morning asking me how I was going to vote on the renaming of the school. My response to the person that wrote that was, I have yet to hear all the information. I have yet to hear what fellow board members have shared about their feelings about this topic. So thank you for sharing that with me. I appreciate it. Does it influence my decision? It does influence my decision somewhat. But I also want to thank the committee, like everyone else has, for their time, insight, commitment, perseverance, and the encouragement that you brought to that whole committee. I appreciate, well, as committees, my understanding, although I wasn't there, that it's a type of ad hoc committee that others could learn from, based on the outcome that you have shared with us here at the board meeting. But for me, a significant amount of information, data, facts, and my experiences, my personal experiences play into my decision also. But from my heart, I think oftentimes we speak from the heart or the soul or from something else. And I think that's, you know, has to be done once in a while, because we're a community that cares so much about each other, particularly about the children here in McFarland. But I, again, you've heard me say I'm proud to have served Conrad Elvium's school for twenty-seven years as the principal. I had the portrait of Conrad Elvium hanging in the office many of those years. Kids that would come in, I was told were afraid because he looked so stern. But on the other hand, it was a great teachable moment. Now, who is that guy? So I told them some just basic information that they couldn't understand. And I think that eased their mind, because whenever they went by their office, they saw this picture hanging there. For support staff, teaching staff, kids and families, our identity has been associated with Conrad Elvium. Not only for the past twenty-seven years, but since nineteen sixty-eight. See, he has been part of our history. That's exactly what it is, history. And it doesn't mean we have to continue the historical piece of it as is. We can continue to honor and respect people for things that they've accomplished in the past in a different way. And that's, that all comes from my heart. However, I do feel it's time to consider a rationale for a potential paradigm shift here in the district, possibly renaming the primary school. Speaking now, from the uncovered history of discrimination, exclusion, falsehoods, some would call them untruths, my thinking and response is one of the evolving paradigm because it continues to change. And I wasn't quite sure how I was going to make the decision until, right, in just a few moments. But I do agree that Conrad Elvium was a person of strong identity here, a person that benefited society not only in McFarland but worldwide. We certainly do not want to forget that either. So in closing, what I would say is that this is probably one of the most difficult decisions that I, as a board member, am facing with, because whatever decision we make collectively as a board may change what we're all about, what we're perceived to be all apart about. Because again, the name out of building is that, just a name on the building, is the people within the building, the people in the community that make that come alive, that share the history or the future of what that person might bring. And that concludes my comments. I'll just add, I love the comments that y'all made, too.
Thanks, Tom. You too.
Yeah. This was extremely difficult from, you know, on many levels. It's, the actions, you know, that we're considering are, you know, almost a hundred years ago. We know to some degree what society was like back then, but not to a great degree. But I think anyone, any right-thinking person understands that racial covenant is not a good thing in terms of the character of the folks that sign it, also considering the character of the folks that refuse to sign it. And some of the actions after the signing of the covenant taken while he was affiliated with the university also appeared to some degree that he wasn't altogether comfortable letting all this information out. Then we jump to his accomplishments. I struggled mightily. I thought it'd be simple. How much good does it take to negate this much bad? I don't know. Nobody I asked knew. So I think we live, we live in today's society, and we should learn from our mistakes. I think Conrad Elvium made a mistake. Were he to come before most anyone in a job interview, his signing of that covenant would in all likelihood be a mark against him. After a lot of, a lot of thought and appreciation for all the information that the committee managed to, to come up with, I don't, I don't imagine that there's much more that we could know about him. This is a difficult vote for me, but I'm going to honor the recommendation of the committee and vote to rename. So now, any other questions or comments you'd like to add?
Can I suggest, at the very least, let's do a better job than what Madison has done in so many communities? They rename it, and that's the end of it, and it goes. There is an incredible library, what am I saying, display that's going on, and it's going to be coming to McFarland unfortunately in two thousand and twenty-six, so about a year from now. And I would hope we might be able to either purchase it, take photos of it, get the rights and put that up. It's called Unjust Deeds. And Jane and I went down to Belleville and saw it, and it's phenomenal. I think, Tom, you may have seen it as well. It's unbelievable, and it gives that, that whole, because to me, if we just say, okay, we changed it, and now we can kind of wash our hands of being accused of being racist, we, I do think we're just pretending. We have to tell the public, this is about something that, I hate to use the word systemic racism, because we're gonna just, we're living in a strange time, but you know what? We also have the courage to literally stand up and say, this is what we believe in. We have to. This is, it's wrong. I'm almost tempted to read what I was going to say here. My, when we moved into our house right after World War Two, there are three communities in East Providence High School where I went to high school. All the black students in our high school all lived in one of those communities. And I got really curious. I haven't done the research, but I can't help but believe that where I lived, which was Riverside, they had racial covenants. Because there were no black kids in my high school, not my, excuse me, in my junior high elementary school. And I know for damn sure, pardon my French, in Rumford, which is to the north of our district, that was where the really rich kids lived. There were no blacks who lived there. So they all lived in East Providence. And so then I said to myself, well, would that mean my dad, because he probably signed it? I think, without even thinking, he just said, well, I guess that's what you gotta do. It's after the war, and he wanted to get in and move in. Was he racist? And was my mom racist? And of course, none of us can judge our parents, right? I mean, let's face it, we're human. But then I started thinking about it, and I read in my yearbook, and I really encouraged some people to read it. I really became very close friends with a guy named Darryl Robertson. We were teammates on the cross-country and track team. We were classmates. And he wrote in my yearbook, I just, I'm like going, holy cow. What he wrote was so, it just touched my soul. It's like, holy buckets. And it's one of these things where I actually lost kind of touch with him. I saw him a couple of times after high school, after he graduated. I know that he's passed away. He died of cancer in his late forties, which is a tragedy. But he was a great guy, great friend. But he was a great guy, great friend. And I just want you to realize what he said, particularly what he said about my parents. So I'm going like, because people sign that, it's a bigger issue than this. And we've got to let the public realize, this is something, it is an ongoing systemic problem in our nation. And until we come to grips with it, it is our cross to bear. We gotta deal with it. And I just hope we will do something rather than just say, oh yeah, we changed it. And, you know, we put these couple of things up here. That was always my argument. If you have his name up there, there's going to be people that say, well, should his name be up there? Well, then read and find out. And I don't know if there is a right or wrong on this and you guys have all said the same. So I'm not here, I'm, I'm going to be a team player. But I just want to make sure that at least we should examine the unjust deeds. It's an unbelievable presentation. And you just sit there very quietly and I just hope it's something that we can, we can think about. And I guess that would be something we have to probably decide later. So, again, forgive me for going on and on. In Scotland, they call that blethering. And so I was blethering, sorry.
I think the other piece for me was ones Dave. You know, we're brought up Catholic, you know? And the experience that we had in our neighborhood with Matthew, Matthew and the family meeting next door to us was just appalling at our neighbors. And ever since I've been a young kid, I've always thought about that. How can you do this to them and to us because we've confirmed it? A new neighbor in the neighborhood. So as far as determination, racism, I have no place for it in my life.
I think we all share that. I think we all share that we want to make a decision that in the long run, it's going to be best for the community and best for our kids. Now that, should anyone want to know about Conrad Elviam, you know, pre-nineteen sixties, you certainly have the information out there to, to go look, do some research on your own and make your own determinations. I think, I think this is a vote that shows both the school district and the community where McFarland has positioned itself in terms of tolerating any sort of anti-inclusionary or racist views. I hope. You know, none of us have a crystal ball. We don't know how people will respond. But this is a brave vote.
Well, and I think it also shows that we don't make decisions based on feelings and based on, I mean, that there's so much information that we are provided and that the committee learned. I mean, that's, you know, we take these things seriously and, and use facts to do them in a time when facts are not necessarily valued. Sounds like we maybe need a motion?
I think so.
I will, I'll move to accept the recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Facilities Naming Committee to rename Conrad LVMU Primary School.
One second. Okay, let me catch up here. Okay. A motion was made by Megan and seconded by Tom. Is there any other discussion?
So what is the, what are the next steps? As Bruce was sharing and others also. How, what do we do so we don't lose faith about who Conrad Elviam was for our community?
I, I think this vote is simply whether or not to rename the facility. Not what it's going to be or anything beyond tonight's vote. I think probably next steps would be to probably have another ad hoc group of some kind to consider names and the process that is going to be used to rename the school.
And I, I just made that comment so we don't lose it.
Right.
Yep.
Yes, so the, those are two separate...
You kind of have three things in front of you. You know, one is how to continue to recognize Conrad LVMU's legacy. The second one is how to decide a new name. And the third one is how are you going to pay for it? So those are really three separate but connected decisions in a way because when you talk about whether it's a display or something to recognize Conrad LVMU, there, there's an expense there as well. So they kind of all tie together. So I think that's something, next action steps for the board to form. What I have told you, many of you individually, is that if you are open to exploring new names and you choose to form another committee, that is great. If you really just want to name it McFarland Primary School, the board does not need to have a committee to make that decision. If you do explore other names and you end up naming it McFarland Primary School, that's fine. That's fine. And I think those are some of the things for the board to think about, what kind of process you'd like to engage in to, to begin the renaming and how it will be funded.
Well said.
Yeah, like everything else, there is a price attached. Not that a decision of this significance should probably be, you know, swayed one way or another by the amount that it figures to cost to rename it. So that, that really didn't enter in my thinking on how I was going to vote.
I will say the estimated cost is about fifteen thousand dollars.
Right.
Um, that, you know, changes by the day. What I would say, the, the other thing, you know, to note is that as of this time, the, there have been no direct expenses that, that the district has paid to, for the process thus far, other than my time, but I'm not an hourly employee, I'm a salaried employee. So, you know, at this point, there has been no direct, and chocolate, we did provide chocolate. But honestly, it hasn't. And it's through donations of people that, that donated to pay for researchers' time. So that's important, that fiscal responsibility that you mentioned. I want to be clear, that money has not been spent in the district. At this time, wherever your vote falls, has not committed any funds.
Okay. So for clarity, then, a yes vote is simply a vote to rename the school. Nothing more, nothing less, that's just one step out of, you know, the process that we have to take. So, I have a motion and I have a second. Is, if there's no further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Excuse me? Okay, thank you. So the motion carries four to one? And we will communicate next steps whenever they're available. A second here. Now we have "Action on Adoption of Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative Resolution. The district belongs to a purchasing cooperative to help reduce the cost of food and materials purchased to run our school nutrition program. There are over fifty member districts that share the fees for procurement of a consultant and a cooperative coordinator, plus reasonable and necessary expenses. Though administrative fees paid through the approved vendor agreements and through membership dues pursuant to Section sixty-six dot zero-three-zero-one of the Wisconsin statutes, if you are in agreement, motion is in order." So I would look for a motion.
I move to adopt the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative Resolution as recommended by administration.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I can second.
Thank you, Megan.
Chapman.
Chapman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, "Action on the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, sixty-six oh-three-two-zero-one Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative Agreement. The district belongs to a purchasing cooperative to help reduce the cost of food and materials purchased to run our school nutrition program. There are over fifty member districts that share the fee for procurement and a consultant and cooperative coordinator, plus reasonable and necessary expenses. Through administrative fees paid through approved vendor agreements and through membership dues pursuant to Section sixty-six dot oh-three-zero-one of the Wisconsin statutes, I would look for a motion to approve." I can do that. Thank you, Bruce.
Can you read the motion, please?
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
Wait a second.
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, sixty-six point oh-three-oh-one Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative Agreement as recommended by administration.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I can second.
Megan?
Chapman. Chapman. Or Fessler, she wins.
Quick draw. Yep.
Sure, yep.
Any other discussion?
Erin, is there a fiscal agent for this one?
Yes, it's Middleton.
Middleton, okay, thanks.
Anything else?
No, I think these cooperative agreements are, as prices go up, they're going to become more and more important. So grateful they exist.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Moving on, "Action on twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six CISA Two Contract. Administration recommends the district sign the CISA Two contract for the educational services that are provided. This contract has been reviewed to ensure only necessary items are included. If you are in agreement, a recommendation of this recommendation, I would look for a motion."
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six CISA Two contract as recommended by administration.
Thank you, Tom.
Fessler can second.
Fessler, second, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, "Action on McFarland High School Spring Early College Credit and Start College Now Program Requests. The students in the, in the exhibit have applied to take college-level courses under the Early College Credit and/or Start College Now programs at Madison College and UW-Madison. A list of all the students and the courses that are requested are included in the packet. If you're in agreement, I would look for a motion to approve these early, early college credit and start college now requests."
I move to approve the course approvals and denials for the early college credit and start college now program requests as recommended by MHS administration.
Thank you, Megan, do I have a second?
Chapman.
Fessler can second, just to make it easy, one of each.
Any other discussion?
Erin, do we have a total cost to the district for students that take advantage of this?
I don't have that off the top of my head, I certainly can get that for you.
And again, I compliment, if it's the high school administration or Andrew Jeff, the way you've laid, laid all the information out, it's a wealth of information, but it's still very self-explanatory.
Excellent, yes, I would give credit to high school student services department.
Yeah.
And can I just point out, we have some smart kids.
Yeah, they're interested in a lot of stuff.
Wow.
I mean, it's not, just for the public, there's nine pages of requests
from various students.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, just since you brought up the cost thing, Tom, which I think is a really good question. The other part of it is that this is also statutorily required of us, right? So regardless of the cost, we have to support it. So, but it's good to know that the cost, what the cost is.
But we require that they take classes that we offer first.
Correct. Yeah, and even says in here, like, it's not approved because I haven't taken X, Y, and Z and whatnot, so.
Or that, or even that a virtual class exists through DCA. So, yeah, it's great.
Anything else? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. "Action on First Reading of Policies. Administration recommends approval for the first reading of the policies listed below. If you're in agreement, I would look for a motion to approve the first reading of the policies. Too numerous for me to read this evening. If someone else would like to do it, you're welcome to. Otherwise, you see the list."
I can, I can read it, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
"I move to approve the first reading of the following policies as recommended by administration. Eleven-hundred, District Organization. Eleven-thirty, Ethics and Conflict of Interest. Twelve-forty-one, Non-Reemployment of the District Administrator. Twenty-two-ten, Curriculum Development. Twenty-two-forty-point-oh-one, Summer or Interim School Attendance. Twenty-two-seventy, Religion in the Classroom. Twenty-two-seventy-one-point-oh-one, Start College Now Program. Twenty-four-sixteen, Student Privacy and Parental Access to Information. Twenty-four-sixty-four, Programs for Gifted and Talented Students. Thirty-two-fourteen, Staff Gifts. Thirty-two-thirty, Ethics and Conflict of Interest. Forty-two-fourteen, Staff Gifts. Forty-two-thirty, Ethics and Conflict of Interest. Fifty-one-thirteen, Open Enrollment Program. Fifty-three-thirty, Administration of Medication and Emergency Care. Taking a breath. Fifty-three-forty-one, Emergence Medical Authorization. Probably means emergency medical authorization. Fifty-four-eleven, Third Grade Promotion and Retention at Risk Students. Fifty-five-twelve, Use of Tobacco and Nicotine by Students. Fifty-seven-ten, Student Complaints. Thirty-four-forty, Job-Related Expenses. Forty-four-forty, Job-Related Expenses. Sixty-one-eleven, Internal Controls. Sixty-one-twelve, Cash Management of Grants. Sixty-one-fourteen, Cost Principles, Spending Federal Funds. Fourteen-hundred, Job Descriptions. Thirty-one-twenty-point-oh-one, Job Descriptions. Fifty-two-hundred-point-oh-one, Full-Time Student. And last but not least, eighty-two-twenty, School Day slash School Closure."
The ever-popular. Okay, well done, do I have a second? I hope.
Did you hear that? I can second it.
Yep.
Yep, I got it. Okay. Megan F. Bruce, did you second that?
Yep.
Okay. I've got a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, could we go through some of those?
Sure.
Should we do what we usually do and just go policy by policy?
I think so, yeah.
Absolutely. Eleven-hundred, District Organization. Eleven-thirty, Eth, Ethics and Conflict of Interest. Twelve-forty-one, Non-Reemployment of the District Administrator. Twenty-two-ten, Curriculum Development.
That's what I have a question about.
Okay.
Uh, under letter D, talks about being consistent with the district's mission, philosophy, and goals, including student voices in both the development of new curricula and the evaluation of existing curricula, and an emphasis on critical thinking skills, especially in the history curriculum. How is history curriculum different, differentiated from other types of curriculum?
I don't know. I, and I don't know why it's particularly separated because we have actually used not only the mission, philosophy, and goals, but student voice in, across our curriculum. So I don't know if there's something statutorily that singles out history, but I certainly can...
I think it's social studies in general. I think they lend themselves to those kinds of... I think it's social studies in general. I think they lend themselves to those kind of debates. I'm taking a class right now with Jane on, uh, the Scopes Trial. And we were talking about how science teachers, in some ways, are somewhat flustered when they hear someone with a different point of view when, what they've learned scientifically. And, and social studies teachers, and I was mentioning in my experience as a teacher, I mean, I had a student who was, uh, very much believed in the theory of creation, you know, creationism. And I always felt it wasn't my role to say, well, why would you have that? It was kind of like, oh, that's interesting, and then explain. And so I think in a way, they're kind of trained, but I don't know if that's true.
Yeah.
I don't know. It's an interesting question you're asking.
So, Tom, are you suggesting that, that they were moved? Yeah, like, why, why highlight?
Why highlight one curriculum area? I mean, I could see social studies.
Yeah, but it's not statutory.
Yeah.
You know, I don't see any reason, unless, unless they're, they, whomever "they" is, has determined that history slash social studies lends itself to creative teaching, I think, sometimes, and alternative facts. And they just maybe want to prevent that sort of thing from happening.
Possibly. I just thought it was, uh, pretty exclusive.
It does seem odd.
Yeah, I will look into that.
Okay, thanks.
Twenty-two forty dot zero one, summer or interim school attendance.
Yes, I have a question on this one. Uh, under the third to the last sentence or paragraph, and this is about summer school, excused, uh, students excused from summer school. It talks about, the school will attempt to contact the parent on the schools, on the student's second day of absence if the parent has not notified the school of the student's absence. Now, that's different from regular school year, right, Erin?
Correct.
Don't they do it, so why, why would we allow two days if we base the regular school year on safe arrival and not during the summer?
The reason why it's been done historically is because summer school attendance is optional and not mandatory.
And then, and I understand that.
So it's not required.
But if a parent sends a little one off to school, but they don't show.
Mm-hmm.
Is, so safe arrival doesn't, doesn't play during the summer school?
It does, it does. And we do, we do check on day one. We don't wait till day two.
Okay.
So it would be fine for us to, to change that. You know, it's, I think it's an unnecessary exception.
You mean to delete it?
The way it is, yes.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think so.
So I could, um, I mean, you could really take out that whole sentence, right?
You really could.
Yep. That was a good catch, Tom.
Okay.
Yes, and that's not required by statute or anything, so.
Twenty-two seventy, religion in the classroom. Twenty-two seventy-one dot zero one, Start College Now program.
Uh, let's see, what about, you have twenty-four sixty-four?
Uh, it's coming up.
Oh, right, it's coming up, sorry.
Yeah, there's kind of the separate packets.
Twenty-four sixteen, student privacy and parental access to information. Twenty-four sixty-four, programs for gifted and talented students.
Yes, I have, uh, something here. On, under the, on the back page, it's talk, under instruction, they talk about, it's the very last sentence. Early admission to kindergarten or first grade, and current enrollment at accredited institutions and early graduation. So are they saying that someone who, I think what they're saying is, early admission to kindergarten or first grade is a form of accelerated learning. Would that be accurate, Erin?
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry. That's what I, that's also how I read it.
Yes, which it is.
It looks like they're providing a list that is inclusive, but not, but not the full list.
Years ago, when I was practicing, uh, we'd have, you know, family now and then have their child enter kindergarten in a parochial school as early entrance. And they were just four. But they still had to meet, they, they still had to age six to enter our first grade. So. But I thought they could get around it, but they, they can't.
Okay. Thirty-two fourteen, staff gifts.
Yeah, I, um, I just wanted to bring up the fact that, um, I think, so in here, is it this one or one of the other ones that we do? Um, where it lists it, but it, um, I don't know that a lot of parents know about this. Or that even staff would, because I, it, um.
I doubt it.
In one of the other ones that we're going to review, they, it talks about a twenty-five dollar limit.
Yeah.
And I had, I had emailed Erin asking if that was a statutory, like, um, determined amount, or if it was something that we determined. And it sounds like it's statutory, because I think that, um, a lot of parents do more than that. Um, especially at the younger grade levels, I think. And I don't want to put our staff at risk or, um, want to just.
Exceeding some.
Yeah.
Statutory amount.
So I don't know. It just might be something we want to, I, I don't, I don't actually have much comment on the actual policy, because I don't know that we can really do much about it. But I think it's just important to note that I think statutorily, the limit's pretty low.
You know, and if, if it becomes any kind of an issue, we should probably just educate folks that these are the rules that we need to play by, and it's the government telling us that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's federal guidance.
Yep.
Again, it's a fine line. You know, parents want to show their child's teacher appreciation. Especially if it's been a hard year or something.
Yeah.
So in the past, I don't think it's been an issue. And I don't want it to be brought up as an issue, you know, so I think just common sense.
Well, and I also think the, one of the other parts of it is, um, wanting to show appreciation, and then also how it can make kids feel who, whose family can't or has decided not to. That's always an interesting thing. So it's, I mean, it all goes to just how much we have to appreciate our staff and educators within the bounds of our budget.
Agreed. But it's also the case, because I've observed this over the years, is that teachers are very, um, careful and, and discreet.
That is true. Yes, that is true.
You know, if they're receiving something, they just think the student, and move on.
That is true.
And I would say that, and it is, just so you know, this policy, staff gifts references the next policy, which is ethics and conflicts of interest, which includes the twenty-five dollars.
Thank you.
Um, specific to federal rules. And I think what I see more, most commonly, is that when families are donating to the classroom, as opposed to, you know, it's like,
Directly to the teacher.
Here is this, get, give this to your class, or here, you know. And that's what teachers most often are doing.
Right.
You know, there's no elaborate trips to the Bahamas or anything.
No.
But, but yes, it's good to be conscious of.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate the thoughtfulness.
Okay, thirty-two thirty, ethics and conflict of interest. Forty-two fourteen, staff gifts once more. Forty-two thirty, ethics and conflict of interest.
Yes, I do have a question about this one.
Forty-two.
Um, and this is, you know, specifically with teachers or support staff that provide tutoring to select students after school, beyond the school day. Because according to this policy, they cannot be in the school building, is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
And now we have the library, which, which helps. That's where some of them have been going to.
And we do provide an annual reminder to staff of those expectations. So that is, that is promoted and something that's clarified. In fact, I think it's likely to go out this coming week. We usually do it about this time of year.
All right. Fifty-one thirteen, open enrollment program.
Uh, let's see, I do have a couple of questions here.
Okay, Tom?
Okay, uh, so, uh, there's a, students are put on sort of a waitlist if they have not gotten in for open enrollment. And then their name comes up. We contact the family, let's say it's close, you know, August sometime. And the family has ten days to respond to the district. Is that statutory, Erin?
I don't believe it is. I don't think anything specific.
Ten days is an awful long time. So like, ten days could be the first day of school. If they decide not to accept that invitation, the next child may already be enrolled in their home school district. So the question is, can we shorten that up to like three days? Because parents will know whether or not they want to send their kid.
It shouldn't. It, if they need ten days to make that decision, that they should have been thinking about, you know, the previous six months. It's, it's hard to make exclusions.
I think some of them apply to multiple school districts, don't they, Erin?
They do.
Aren't they supposed to do that?
No, they.
I think they can. They can.
So again, three days, it, it, from my, in my opinion, that's sufficient. Because especially if other kids on the waiting list.
I wonder if it's, so, ten days, does it, I don't remember reading it actually, but, um, when does the ten days start? From?
Probably once they're notified.
So if they receive it in the mail, sometimes, like, I wonder if it's ten days because of the mail.
And is it, is it only via mail?
It's ten calories from the date of notice.
Date of notice.
Yeah, so.
It doesn't need to be mail. And most often, it's like, that's a phone call.
Oh, so a phone call, okay.
I can look and just make sure it's not statutory or required.
Yeah.
And how would the others feel if we shortened that timeline?
I would be okay, as long as it's actually in whatever delivery method is used.
Yeah.
Yeah, through the post, postal service.
But they, they said they call them.
That's typically what you would.
I mean, that's the fastest rate of getting a hold of students.
Yeah, okay. Um.
But if we don't get a hold of someone, it may take longer.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I would be open to that.
So that's probably why it is, ten days, is so that, the default being mailing. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Which does make sense, you know, you know how long it takes, right?
Could we do something like, if successful notices happened with a phone call, then you have three days. If it's mail, then you default to ten, or something like that? If it's, after you find out what's, I mean, I don't want to overcomplicate it, but
No, no.
I agree on some of all that.
I would be surprised if they would do it through the mail, other than to make sure that what you said was going to happen is official, you know, to confirm that you've got, you, you've been given an opportunity to enroll someone in, in school.
I just want to make sure that families that are serious about having their child come here and they're on the waitlist, that there isn't someone in front of them that, you know, they, they're, they're just going to wait and sort of see.
True. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that, that, the challenge is just making sure you get contact with someone.
Yes.
Because you can say, yeah, we just call, but if I'm not getting anybody, and I'm not getting any number, and the number's disconnected, and who knows, right?
Yep.
So you probably mail something out right away, just because you know that's, so, but I can check. I will check.
Yeah, I don't want other families to suffer due to the negligence of some families.
One person's negligence does not make an emergency for me.
Right.
Okay.
I did have one, so under, I think it's the second page of this one, under the full-time open enrollment, annual space determinations, the new language. Um, I think it was confusing to me. Who, it's, so it says, if the board determines that no special education space is available in any greater program, the district must still review each student's IEP in its entirety to determine the following, um, whether there's space and whether we have the capacity, basically. Who's, who's IEP is under review?
So, the students' IEP is under review. The, the two different, what makes them difference?
Different, excuse me.
Um, the first one is whether there's, we provide the service, but is there space available? The second bullet is, do we provide the service? So there are certain services that some districts provide and some don't. You don't have to provide. So you could not have space, that's one issue, or you could not even provide the service. Does that make sense?
Yes. But even in the first part where it says, if it determines that there's no special education space, why are we still reviewing the student's IEP? Like, are they, are?
Yeah, that's a little redundant or something.
Like, I don't, it feels like that's a waste of resources to review the IEP if, if we've already determined.
A determination has already been made.
There's no space.
Is that statute-driven, though? That sounds like.
Well, that would make sense.
That's, but we know a law.
Right.
Um, yeah, I can check. The wording is a little bit, yeah, I see what you're saying, because it says no space available. And then it says again, whether space is available.
Well, and even just the idea that if, if we've already determined there's no space, then why are we reviewing IEPs? First, you know what I mean?
Okay, I will check.
Okay. Thank you.
Fifty-three thirty, administration of medication and emergency care.
Yes, I do have a question, a couple of questions here. In that first paragraph, they talk about administering medication during school hours. So if kids are up for sports or clubs, is that just an extension of the school hours, Erin?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, that was easy.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Oh, and I have a, and, uh, on page three, three of four, in the middle of the page, it talks, there's an option that's marked there. And they have a new term that I'm not familiar with. Bronco dilators.
Bronco, wait, where is that one?
Under, in the middle? Is it?
Oh.
I presume it's something to do with asthma?
Yep.
I'm not familiar with that term, but.
What letter is it under?
It's kind of in the middle of the.
G, probably.
Oh.
All that, where all the green starts.
Oh, okay. Bronco dilators. So what they are, those, those tubes that the asthma or the medication goes in. And so when kids take their asthma, only reason I know this is because my kids have them. Um, and it just makes it easier for them to breathe it in, rather than it being kind of like a start, like, it kind of is like, it's a little bit easier.
That's true. It's like an add-on to the inhaler.
Yeah, just like a big tube.
That's where you also see some of these, the terms, and this was, some of these changes were actually from our health services department, like with the epinephrine delivery systems.
Because there's just so many new things coming up, and it just allows flexibility, so you don't have to change it every time a new name comes.
Yep.
Okay.
That's great.
Fifty-three forty-one, uh, as we said, I'm going to assume that is emergency medical authorization. Fifty-four eleven, third grade promotion and retention at-risk students. Fifty-five.
I'll just, so, um, under introduction, it talks about, it would go into effect, um, September twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, that was a good question.
Is there a reason why it's out so far?
Yes, because that is the latest date you can have it. And so ourselves and many other districts, because this is not, this is a policy that is per state statute. And we are anticipating, um, a couple of things. One is the, um, level of support and direction provided to support the statute has not been provided by the state. Um, so we're putting everything in motion, but in terms of being accountable for the policy, we'd rather wait because it's likely to be changed between now and that date. So we want to kind of be like, you know, until this policy won't go into effect, until we've got, we and others have all the kinks worked out.
And this is the, just for clarification, this is, so this is act twenty.
Yes.
So this is the one that's stuck in all of the courts between, with the support? Like, if it's funded or not, right?
Correct.
Okay. So that's why you anticipate there being changes and unknowns.
And there's just, we're learning. Everybody's learning as, as we're implementing, because we are, everybody's implementing, we're implementing. You're learning things, and so it could be possible that this model policy will be adjusted, revised prior to that date. So then we'll have a updated policy.
Okay.
And when they talk about retaining students at third grade, if they aren't reading at third grade level at the end of the year, the, the whole issue of retention that goes off to the side, according to the politicians, unless we do some of these other things, like summer school or the, the reading plans, and making modifications to them. that goes off to the side, according to the politicians, unless we do some of these other things, like summer school, or the, the reading plans, you know, make modifications to them.
Correct, that was hotly debated.
Yes, I would imagine so.
It was hotly debated at the legislature.
What are our staff saying about this? Do they have any?
That's a good question.
Fear that there's gonna be increased numbers of students, or there's gonna be budget implications?
Yes, and yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I, I think the, um, the spirit of Act twenty is, is supported. You know, I think the, the need to, to, you know, increase some of our early reading support is important, and our staff value that, and are very committed to it, and are doing great things. Things we're already doing and changing, but, um, the legislature's caught up to us, and so I think people feel like, you know, the challenge with any statute is there's hoops. There are steps you have to take that at times feel a little less, uh, um, feel more like your checking boxes sometimes, so what I think our staff have done that is really great, is they're trying to make it as valuable as they can, and meaningful to the student learning, and we're seeing progress from our students already.
Well, if I had a third grade student, I'd want them in this just district versus ninety-nine percent of the other districts, knowing what support systems are available.
We're seeing great work, people are working really hard right now to get this implemented, that's, it's just, there's a lot, there's a fair amount of accountability, which we understand and respect, uh, and, and appreciate, it's just, that adds some bureaucracy.
Yeah.
And if I could chime in real quick, nothing to do with this, I was totally misspoke, misspoke when I was talking about the bronchodilator.
Oh, okay.
When my kid's pediatrician was telling me about it, they were actually referring to the medication itself. So, any inhalant that will help with asthma and breathing, if that's what it is, the tube is like some valve tube chamber, but they just called it all one thing, so.
Okay.
I didn't wanna misrepresent any medical stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Nice job fact-checking yourself.
Fifty-five twelve, use of tobacco and nicotine by students. Fifty-seven ten, student complaints. Thirty-four forty, job-related expenses. Forty-four forty, job-related expenses. Sixty-one eleven, internal controls. Sixty-one twelve, cash management of grants. Sixty-one fourteen, cost principles, spending federal funds. Fourteen hundred, job descriptions.
I have a question about that.
Go ahead.
Erin, how often are the job descriptions updated?
Not often enough, and so, um.
There we go.
I would say that one of the things that we've uncovered, uh, is that our job descriptions are very out of date. And so what we're starting to do is, as positions become available, uh, open and we're posting, is when we're updating the job descriptions. The reason for this district-initiated proposed change is because currently, under policy, every time we change a job description, it requires board approval.
Right.
Well, that adds another step that is gonna slow down that process. So it allows us to work with staff and to update job descriptions as responsibilities change.
We could change board policy on that, though, and say we wouldn't need board approval to, for a change.
And that's what this is.
Oh, that's what this is.
That's what it is, isn't it?
And that's what it is, it would allow that flexibility, and to be honest, I'm not sure that it's a policy that has been followed. Um, my guess is, over time, you know, whenever this came into effect, you know, adopted in two thousand twelve, I would, I would guess since two thousand twelve or two thousand nineteen, depending upon the revision, that po, as job descriptions have been updated without board vote. I do know the teacher job description did, was vetted through the board and voted through the board, but there's many other positions that we do. Um, support staff currently, uh, it is allowed, it doesn't require board approval currently, so this just mi, would then mirror the support staff.
That sounds a good, good plan.
That's why I brought it forward.
All right.
Good question.
Thirty-one twenty dot zero one, job descriptions. Fifty-two hundred dot zero one, full-time student.
I have a question about that, just, um, simply 'cause, because we just reviewed it in January, um, what prompted the change?
Yeah, so this is something we've been working with, um, the high school and, and student services, uh, department about, because we felt that the, this previous language that this year, it talks, you know, about this being six credits, well, what's more important for us is that the kids are enrolled in something during the day, um, or that there is, uh, you know, a separate plan dictating their instruction, so an IEP or a five oh four, so. What we did for this process was to look at other districts' policies and realize that ours was a little bit limiting. And now this allows clarity, I think, for all students of a variety of situations.
Is it an issue often?
I think it is not, I wouldn't call it so much an issue, I think we feel like we're having to explain the policy to people, and this makes it a little more user-friendly, I think, by just saying they just need to be scheduled in a class, study hall, or other school-sponsored supervised work experience program.
I like it.
You know, explain to.
Why not?
Who, who are the people that you?
Students and parents.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, last but not least, eighty-two twenty, school day, school closure.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. It su, it sounds like we've removed the temperature in degrees and chill factor out there.
Right, yes and no.
And now we go with, uh, winter warnings, weather warnings, and extreme cold.
Which is based on a temperature.
That's, that's what I was gonna ask too, as a best.
Benchmark for that then?
Specifically defined.
Yeah, minus thirty.
Minus thirty.
But that's coming from the National Weather Service, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And so, this was one of those things that I just happened to stumble on, because the National Weather Service changed their criteria for this, this past winter.
Oh, they did?
Uh, yes, yep, and they, they no longer use a wind chill term, a wind chill warning.
Oh.
But that doesn't exist, it's extreme cold, and so I just wanted to update this to reflect it, and it also provides flexibility so that if the National Weather Service determines that an extreme cold warning is now minus thirty-five again, that we don't need to come back.
Right.
And change the policy, that we're just gonna rely on that, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Would that have any impact with what the feds are doing, um? It's impacting, I think, some of, a couple of the Madison weather stations.
Oh, where there's.
Where they're only relying on weather from regional areas, national weather forecasters, like in Sullivan, Wisconsin.
Right.
They won't be relying on our local folks.
Yeah, WKOW, I think, actually falls under that umbrella, where it's all being turned over to central, like, it'll be coming out of Atlanta now, and it'll just be like, oh, this is your weather. It won't have local meteorologists.
But, but they must have sensors in each of those geographical locations, so they know what our temperature is.
Not, not my area of expertise.
Come on.
I just, when the National Weather Service, which is, is based out of Sullivan, when they, when they tell us what it is, then I go, okay, thank you for telling me.
You know, they still exist?
We still have to make a call.
The Weather Service, National Weather Service?
Yes, oh, yes, I mean, I get, I got an email today.
I thought there was, you know, chatter that that was gonna be done away with on a national level as well.
CNN breaking news.
Yeah, I think you're thinking of the National Oceanic.
Yeah.
But, um, I will, but I will, they've been great, they're a great partner, the National Weather Service is amazing. The support they provide at, with their three forty-five webinars are outstanding.
Could change them, man.
Can't really change at this time, I guess.
That's in the morning.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and we have had adequate discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero, action on recommended WEVA Destinations Career Academy and Insight School of Wisconsin, Wisconsin statute one-one-eight dot four-zero-eight G, student transfers to resident districts. At this time, WEVA Destinations Career Academy and Insight School of Wisconsin are requesting approval of recommended student transfers back to their resident districts due to lack of engagement. Look for a motion.
I move to approve the WEVA Destinations Career Academy and Insight School of Wisconsin recommended school transfers back to their resident districts due to lack of engagement.
Thank you, Megan.
Fessler, Fessler can second.
Thank you, Megan Fessler. Any other discussion?
I'll have to draw from memory, because I left my data on my desk at home. There's like one third grader, one fifth grader, one sixth grader, and six eighth graders.
Yeah.
Good memory.
That's correct.
Yeah, it is.
Wow.
Children, adolescents.
That deserves an applause.
That are going from a safe situation, at least they're being monitored right now, uh, through WEVA, out to limbo somewhere. And I understand, I don't like it, you know, I don't think any of us like it, we're gonna let these kids fall.
It is, it has improved, though.
It has improved.
We're, they're trending in the right direction.
Absolutely.
For sure. Okay, all those in favor?
Tom, I, I'm sorry, I was just gonna ask one question.
You go right ahead.
Who are you gonna pass that off to when you leave?
WEVA?
Yes, making sure that we, I know, not WE, I, not WEVA, just the specific thing of identifying when we have the really youngest learners.
It doesn't require board action.
But I'll be listening.
Isn't that on the agenda?
But I'll be listening for that, but don't hear it, I'll be calling somebody.
All right.
I'll be calling somebody.
Guess who? Okay, any other? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero, and I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn our meeting. I was waiting for Mr. Fisher.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero, and we are adjourned at nine twenty-one. Well done by all, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Melanie.
Okay, that cracks me up.
We were one minute late.
And it's apparently my fault.